We'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're a small group tonight. Hopefully, people are tuning in. We do have emergency exits on either side of the room. So this is different for us. We are missing two board members that couldn't be with us tonight, but they are live streaming with all of you and paying attention and calling in with their questions as well. So we'd like to welcome everybody. I think this is the first time in Dr. Johnson's entire history to have a board meeting that looks like this. We are sitting as far away from each other as possible. We're going to run through everything. We want to make sure we get everybody's questions answered. And I just really want to start from the board, on behalf of the board, and thanking Dr. Johnson, Dr. Pelletary, Dr. Sampaino, Dr. Leahy, Mr. Bartels, Jackie Wong, and the entire administration staff for everything that they've done getting our kids set up for remote learning and communicating with parents and just keeping the district afloat in just such an unprecedented time. Obviously, nobody expected for this to happen. I know we were all kind of scrambling to make sense of what's happening right now, and it's an ever-changing and fluid situation, but it's very important that we stay in communication with each other, that we support each other, and that you know that the school district is still here and open for business, even if the schools are not operational right now. So we really do thank each one of you here and the staff, the teachers, who are still working their school day, our custodial staff, who's been cleaning our buildings. We couldn't express our appreciation and gratitude enough for what everybody in the district is doing right now. So we have lots to get to. We hope that you'll ask in your questions, and we're going to turn it over to Dr. Johnson for an update on the coronavirus.
Thank you very much. There are just a couple of things that I wanted to say, and I think probably, once we get to the question and answer, a lot of the devil's in the detail, I think, but we can probably address a lot of that when the questions posed to us by members of the community. However, I will say that if I had to use two terms to describe what has transpired, one is resilience and the other is creativity. I will tell you that I am, I guess I shouldn't say shocked by, but I am always just, in fact, exhilarated with joy when I see how resilient the staff is in the school district in the way in which they, you try to create a system that can deal with issues and problems, and then you never anticipate, as I have never in the 34 years that I have served this community, ever contemplated anything quite as severe or problematic as the one we're living through right now. And yet, every single time I turn to any member of the staff, some of whom are represented right here, whether it's been the Board of Education, you guys have been absolutely superb in the communication back and forth and working with us on a day-to-day basis. Every member of our teaching staff, who has been asked to rise to an occasion that they never anticipated when they took on their teaching responsibilities, however many years that might have been ago. Every single person in the school district, every custodian, every secretary, every teacher aide, every TA, and every teacher, every administrator, have risen to this occasion. And it has demonstrated to me again and again the resilience and the character of who it is that we are as a system. And only to find out that I believe, and as does I think every single person, that despite the fact that we have had to close the buildings and remove from the buildings the instruction, we are determined to make sure that that instruction is going to continue and to take place, and that the children in this community are the priority, and that at the end of the day, despite the fact that they are working at home, every teacher and everybody in the school district that is involved in restructuring how we provide that and the learning experience for our kids have done so in a way in which children at home are going to be experiencing a meaningful day. We are going to be able to contribute to the family opportunity to provide for their children on a day-to-day basis. I can only imagine what many of these families, "What in the name of God am I going to do with my kids who are home every single day, that are not supposed to go out? They're not supposed to do this? They're not supposed to do that? They shouldn't be with their friends?" Well, we need to make sure that there's a certain semblance of continuity with what it is that they're used to and that there is some semblance of normalcy to what it is that they are accustomed to doing on a regular basis, which is they are still looked at by us as learners. We are still going to make sure that they have an opportunity to learn, even though it may not be with their peers in the classroom, it is going to be at home with their families. So that gets to the other thing, the creativity. And I will tell you that we have explored a whole variety of different options that we might have considered in making sure that our children have a meaningful experience and have landed on the process that we think is probably the most effective for our students and the easiest to implement on our end. I know that there have been a number of questions, some raised by the public outside, certainly by members of our staff, as to whether or not we should try to get our teachers involved in a one-to-one experience with them or a one-to-25 experience face-to-face. We thought that was not the best way in which we should be doing it with our children. Our teachers are not accustomed to working in that type of environment, nor are our kids. So what they are used to is working on their computers. They are used to working with paper and pencil, and they are used to communicating via email with one another and with their teachers, and they are used to, in fact, submitting many of their projects, many of their written assignments, many worksheets on the computer to their teachers. What we needed to do was to make sure that every one of our teachers became accustomed to working with a singular platform in the district. We opted for Google Classroom. And in the sixth grade through, I'm actually, in the fifth grade through 12th grade, we've been using it now all year. We used to use something called eBackpack, and then we had real problems with them as they began to kind of go out of business. We have opted for it. We've been working with it now for a year. And so it provides a certain comfort level and enables our teachers to work in something with which they are accustomed and the kids are accustomed to work in. So from the point of view of a platform for communicating, that's what we opted to do. In kindergarten through third grade, we relied pretty much exclusively on sending home packets. It was our feeling, after meeting with our staff, that we did not have enough time to either familiarize our teachers or the children with this Google platform. And so we felt we would give to them what they are accustomed to working with on a day-to-day basis. We put together packets, gave them envelopes, and sent it home with them last Friday. And we did enough to cover a two-week period of time. The other thing that we wanted to do was to attach ourselves to curriculum that was already in place, without trying to reinvent the wheel and having our teachers recreate on an electronic medium the lessons that they might ordinarily provide in the classroom, where they are already in place, lessons and curriculum and units of instruction that we could tap into, align with what we would normally have taught in the classroom, and allow our kids to have that experience at home. And things like the Khan Academy, Ed, what's her name?
Discovery Ed.
Yes. We landed on this. We trained our teachers to be able to use this. The elementary teachers got together as groups. I know our secondary teachers within their buildings did the same thing. They basically selected what they thought to be was a variety of experiences for the kids to work on for the next two weeks. And so I can only applaud the incredible work that went into this in advance. And I'm really hopeful. Certainly, the feedback that we have gotten on day one has been very positive, that not only were the kids somewhat prepared, but certainly the teachers in the school district were prepared to provide that meaningful experience, to engage kids on a regular hourly basis. Teachers will, in fact, be expected to work during, on a regular workday or close to it, and will be available to children during that period of time each day. So we're confident that that will work. We are hoping that people will give us feedback that will help us enhance that. We are already in the process of preparing should, in fact, the time that the schools are closed extend beyond April 1st. We're fully anticipating that that, in fact, given what we're learning more as each day passes about the magnitude of the problem as it grows almost exponentially within our communities, that we will end up being closed beyond April the 1st. So whether it happens or not, we are going to be prepared for that as we were prepared, I think, for the closure this time. And so we are already looking to another two weeks that we can provide for our children at home. The second thing that has come up in numerous discussions, and by the way, just so you know, we, when I say "we," all of us here administratively in this room are working with state officials. We are involved in a variety of different meetings electronically with either the Commissioner of Education, the Commissioner of Health, the county executive, or representatives from the governor's office on a regular basis to get clarification for exactly what is transpiring with all of these executive orders that are coming down to us from Albany or from the county, in order to make sure that we are doing everything correctly in implementing the plans to ensure that our children get this meaningful experience at home. So one of those executive orders included the provision that we not just provide instruction, but also provide for food for our families in this community. Many families, as we are well aware, have less resources and depend on the schools for both breakfast and for lunch. So what we have done is put together cold packs and opened our schools. I know that Mr. Bartels had put together a robo-call to the entire group of children who are eligible the other night. And we had a number of children show up at the three sites that we have designated within our community, where children can come to pick up their food on a daily basis. They are Watson, Covert, and Riverside Schools. We will reevaluate or evaluate exactly what transpires there, and if we need to facilitate and to change that, we will do so on Friday. We're going to look very carefully at who comes, how many came, and make sure that we do everything we possibly can to get to the food to the people who really and truly need it within this community. Look, there are so many questions out there that people have with regard to things like the 3-8 testing, which is scheduled for a week or two weeks from now, the Regents exam, the IB exams, the IB courses, the work that's due for IB. We are trying to address that. We met for three hours yesterday with our principals to review many of these issues and questions. And to the extent that we are able to, we continue to send out information in email form. And we are also trying to, on almost, I won't say a daily basis, but close to a daily basis, update the website with information that, as it becomes available to us, that might be able to help people answer many of the questions that may reside within their own heads or within their own families. So we are living through a very, very crazy time. Again, I'm going to go back to the two words that I used before, resilience and creativity, and tell you that I have been amazed at the creative ways in which our staff and our families are willing to work together to make this thing happen effectively, and also with the resilience of our staff, which starts right here with the Board of Education. And I can't tell you how much I can thank you for what you have done to help us get through this very, very difficult time. So at any rate, that concludes my remarks. I certainly would be, I don't know, Chris and Noreen. I know that Dr. Leahy has been working with me up through today. And one of the things, one added dimension to all of this really has to do with the face-to-face contact that is included on some of the IEPs for some of our special education students. We are trying to map out a plan right now so that we can provide that one-to-one. Even though we're not doing it with every child and every class, there may be opportunities for us where specialized reading is involved, specialized services are involved, or counseling services are involved, where it makes a lot of sense for either a psychologist, a counselor, or a reading specialist to provide those specialized services in a one-to-one, face-to-face contact with an individual child. So each day, we are exploring the different things that we have to do. I will tell you that Dr. Leahy, and I know that we sent something out, I think, today, again, from her office, encouraging families in this community who are experiencing anxiety or some problems with their children that they feel we could help contribute to solve, to give her a call, call their principal. We will reach out to them. We have staff that are prepared to do that. And so we're trying to examine this, not just from an instructional point of view, but from the entirety of the experience that children have in school and try to replicate it electronically. And to that extent, I can tell you that, as you, the board knows, I'm not sure everybody in the community realizes, every single day that passes, we are finding new dimensions of this that we really need to examine and try to figure out ways to resolve so that it satisfies the needs of our children and does so using a medium that we have not entirely familiar with, but are prepared to try our best to make sure that the services that people are accustomed to receiving, they receive. So that concludes my remarks, and I'd be prepared to answer any questions that either the board has or any members of the community have when the appropriate time comes up later on.
Dr. Johnson or Mr. Bartels, what time do we distribute food at the three locations?
Oh, thank you very much. What we're doing is every day from 11 to 1 o'clock. Thank you, John, for bringing that up. I left that out.
And can I ask, if a family's feeling stressed or anxious about things, how do they get in touch with the principal or the school district? Because the phones, there's nobody here to answer the phones typically?
Right. What we have tried to do, and we have it on our website, is that we will reach out by phone if we get an email. We really, we've really had to, we can't guarantee anybody's going to answer the phone. And so we're trying to discourage people from using the telephone, other than for us to reach them. So what we want is them to share us, share with us information about how to contact them. And we will then reach out to them, probably telephonically initially, and then hopefully using some of the platforms that we are using among ourselves. Even FaceTime we can use. So, Noreen, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add to that?
No, I think you covered everything, Dr. Johnson. I really just want to reiterate the importance of looking at the website for the resources we have if your children are experiencing any kind of stress or anxiety related to this social isolation. There's great resources. In fact, the Behavioral Health Center and Rockville Center, to which we have just recently become partnered with Northwell. I was on a conference call this morning with our consortium districts and Dr. Fuer, and they've provided really an enormous amount of resources for us. They will be open, and I explained that in the email that was sent today. So, you know, please do reach out. Same goes for the special education-related services and specialized instruction, all of that. We are trying to create, you know, align what we're doing remotely as closely as possible with the needs of the children's IEP goals. And so I really encourage parents to reach out to special education teachers, and of course, I've encouraged vice versa as well, so that line of communication stays open. And we make this as seamless as possible for students with disabilities.
I think, too, we should just reiterate that you had created a special email address for people to contact in case there was any reporting that they needed to do on sicknesses or exposure to sickness, because even though the schools are not open, we still need that information.
Yes, it's very, very helpful. The district medical officer is in contact with the superintendent at least once a day, reviewing those cases. And it's been very, very helpful to us in making decisions about any kind of exclusion that might have to occur.
So that's a specific address. What is that?
It is. It's, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to look it up. It's like COVID-19. Self-report, covid19-self-report@rbcschools.org.
It was in the last letter also that we sent home to parents.
Covid-19-self-report.
That is on the website, by the way. And what we really would want people to do, we, she's not with us right now, but we have somebody who's pretty much dedicated her entire life to making sure that the website is navigable by just about anybody, including the superintendent. So if he can do it, anybody can do it. We also want to make sure that, as we move forward, we are also putting there tips on how to use the Google Classroom. So you have to kind of scroll down a little bit to find that information, but it's all there. And so, again, if members of the board or the community feel that there's things that are missing from that and we can add to it, certainly let us know, and we would be more than happy to figure out a way to get that information out. But we're really hopeful that people will use the website as the focal point of connecting with us. And then if they want to connect with us individually, they can do so, and there's plenty of opportunity through the email. All the correspondence, don't call the district, email us, and we will get back to people who are emailing us. And we've been pretty good at that so far. All right?
Just a comment as a parent, since those of us that are here, our litmus test as well for how it went today. Both of my students knew exactly what to do, what was expected. Teachers were in communication. I have one that's younger that had a hybrid iPad Plus packet, older one on Google Classroom, and was really impressed with everything that was there, exactly what was expected to be there. I thought the website was phenomenal. Everything's available to people to print out. So in case you did miss school on Thursday or Friday of last week and didn't get your packets home for the younger people, everything's available to print out. But as a parent, I just wanted to say again, thank you. I thought it ran so smoothly, and the kids were really well-prepared. And from speaking to people in other districts, I think we were well ahead of the curve here on this. And you had good foresight to know what was coming and really have us well set now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question from a board member. Liz Dion asked if a child or parent tests positive for the coronavirus, should they, excuse me, should they be contacting the school district?
Yes. We would hope that they would email us and let us know. I'm pretty much in touch with, if not me, Noreen, or Noreen and I are in contact on a day-to-day basis with Tara Algerio Vento, who is a nurse practitioner for our school. She's our school health, basically, our school health director. And once that happens, we'll have to check with the county and talk about a protocol that we may have to utilize. Just understand, people testing positive now are not in school. So that, we're going to have to review that and work with the county on exactly what impact that may have down the road. But again, some investigation will have to take place. Remember, what we had done before when the kids were in school, if that were to transpire, we had to put everybody out for 24 hours, conduct an investigation with somebody from the Health Department. They are still investigating these incidents and will provide us with some guidance as to exactly how the school district should respond.
Should we get into some of the questions that people had written in to us that were specifically about this? Or should we save the questions for all at once? Because some of these have to do with the specific.
Should we do a survey of the people sitting in the room?
Thank you for those. So we did have a couple of questions related to either remote learning or school closures. Jackie, should we jump into some of those?
Do you want to do that? Okay. We had a question earlier this afternoon from Mrs. Baxter. What is the plan to get teachers actively engaged with students, school, classroom, and the lack of daily structure is not the answer for the coming weeks? Zoom is a free platform, and remote learning is conducted by companies and universities all over the world. Why isn't this approach being applied to Rockville Center schools?
I can begin answering that and then turn it over to Chris or Noreen. I think I explained somewhat on a positive side. It wasn't that we didn't consider Zoom and other platforms. We are using them administratively, by the way, so that we will then remain in contact with one another when, in fact, we are working remotely. We do this with the principals. The principals are, in fact, able to do this with their teachers, should they choose to. We use Google Hangout, which we find a satisfactory alternative to Zoom at this point. And we're very familiar with these environments, and we felt that it was just, the course of action that we chose was, we did because of the shortness of time that we had to prepare people, and we felt much more comfortable in preparing them for the utilization of either the platforms that they were familiar with and/or sharing information in a structure with which they were very familiar. There may be one or two or three teachers in every one of our buildings who are very familiar with utilizing this type of technology and providing instruction, but the vast majority of our staff were not. The lead time to getting people prepared for that would have been longer than the three days that we took to get everybody ready for the current format that we are using. And we are comfortable that the format will and provide for meaningful instruction to these children. And at the end of the day, instruction will continue. So what was the other part of that question? One had to do with Zoom.
Well, how the teachers can actively engage with the students. So really, they're emailing, and they're working their regular school day, and they're in touch with the children via email.
Well, yes. They are on with their class on Google Classroom. And if parents or children want to email them, everyone now has an email address so that we can exchange information back through email. Everybody got a Gmail account, so we made sure that they had those accounts in advance of the closure of the schools. So we're comfortable that whether or not they use Google Classroom or email, there's plenty of opportunities. And our experience today, from the feedback that we've gotten, is just that. There has been lots of exchanges back and forth between children and their teachers.
And just to clarify, because I know people had questioned it before today it happened, students are not expected to log on at a certain time for any sort of class. So they can do the work at their leisure, at the times, try to get their assignments in when they're due. But otherwise, the teachers really are working during the regular school day. So if they contact a teacher on the off hours, they might not hear back until the following day.
Right.
day.
Right. They can submit the work at 8:00 at night, but they should not expect that a teacher is going to respond to them until the following day. And what we've asked our teachers to do, you know, look, even during a regular workday, the teachers are not in classroom all day long, but during that workday is the time when we expect that teachers will be responding to children.
Thank you.
All right?
Yep.
Okay. Kathleen Reeves asked, I understand that you may not be able to answer my question. However, I was wondering if the state plans to have Regents exams this year? It would be, it would seem incredibly unfair to students who struggle in certain subjects and rely heavily on regular instruction as well as extra help provided by the district. Any information that you do have would assist in calming the anxiety of many students.
Look, many of us have raised that question with the commissioner and with a number of other people in the state. They're very, very acutely aware of what this means to the state and to themselves. And we're expecting guidance sometime in the next few days, certainly about the 3-8 testing that was scheduled later in March and early April. So that's going to have to be addressed immediately. I do know that there will be guidance with regard to the Regents later on. I'm not quite sure. We'll do everything we possibly can. We'll have to, if the Regents exams are continuing, part of our discussion, and Chris, you may want to add something to this, with John Murphy and the members of the staff at the high school, is that we will do everything we possibly can. And the information that we're sending home should be and has, or is compatible with what it was that would have taken place in their classrooms. And therefore, we're hoping to use this opportunity to help them advance. They may not be able to advance in the entirety. The woman is right, there may be some kids who are going to struggle with this format and they may not have access to the extra help. That's one of the things that Dr. Leahy is trying to work on as we speak, so that that extra help type of environment can in fact be enhanced by, in some cases, one-to-one, face-to-face instruction. But the Board of Regents and the State Education Department and our commissioner are going to have to make a decision very shortly on exactly what all of this is going to mean. I think a lot will come down within the next week because we will have a better idea of when they can anticipate the coronavirus problem spiking in New York State and what that curve is going to look like. And once we begin to recover, whether or not we should open schools or not, those are all questions that I can't answer. We're going to have to depend on the medical professionals involved in public health to help and guide us through those very, very difficult times.
So we'll update the public as we get more--
Absolutely. Any information we get on a day-to-day basis, we've been trying to share with the public.
Okay.
All right?
Mrs. Reeves also wrote, will the students be given an opportunity to get things from their lockers?
Yes. What we're probably going to do is open either the middle school or the middle school and the high school where children, even though they were told to bring everything home, we always know that there's either somebody, or they thought they brought everything home and then there's something that was on the shelf that they forgot. So we're going to open up both the high school and the middle school on Friday. And we'll send out some correspondence tomorrow to let people know exactly how that's going to happen. We don't want everybody arriving at the same time, so what we're going to try to do is to schedule it during the day. Anything? Chris said, do you want to add to that?
We had talked, we'll have to schedule it with the principals, obviously, and have staff in the building. And we were talking about doing something along the lines with last name and so that we don't have everyone trying to show up at the same time during a short window and that defeats the purpose of the school, not being a gathering place. So we'll make sure that we work that out. We'll push that information out hopefully tomorrow and get it on our website so that people know how to follow up.
Is the feeling that the elementary students pretty much have everything, so that's not a concern for the elementary buildings?
Yes. And it would not be something that an elementary child, remember, they backpack everything every day.
Right.
So that the teachers in a ratio, see, what happens in the high school is very different. It's all student-dependent. In a classroom like on that Friday, it's somewhat teacher-dependent. Most of our teachers made sure that everything that they wanted their kids to have were in those backpacks before they left school on that Friday. So again, it's more teacher-dependent at the elementary level and so we're pretty confident that we don't have to open the buildings to kids at the elementary level.
Thank you.
All right?
Yep.
If the situation arose where an elementary parent realized that their child left something in their desk that they needed, how can that be arranged?
We are prepared. We have a custodian, at least one custodian, and a security person in every building every day. The parent would need to go to the building, just basically ring the bell.
It would be great, Dr. Jay.
You probably want them to email the principal.
Yeah, it'd be great if we emailed the principal first, reach out to the principal and they'll arrange. I know they've been doing that on a case-by-case basis already at the elementary level.
Yeah, it's interesting. Most of the principals have reached out to their respective and said if they have any questions or concerns or issues like this, email them and they will get back to them with the time. And then we'll alert the people in our building when they arrange for that. We're not precluding anybody from coming in the buildings.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to give the option. That was out there.
Chris, speaking about elementary, can you just talk about report cards and parent-teacher conferences, please?
Sure. We are sending out an email this evening. It may have actually been scheduled to go out already insofar as Friday. We're still looking forward to posting report cards for the second trimester on the elementary parent portal. That'll happen this Friday at 12:00 noon. So an email is going out tonight to remind folks of that. We also have scheduled parent-teacher conferences each year, but unfortunately, with what's happening, we are going to cancel those face-to-face conferences. An email does speak to that insofar as parents can arrange for phone conferences with teachers if they so choose via, again, email, reaching out to a teacher. They'll work out a mutually beneficial time where they can work together and have that phone conference. And you may have some teachers asking parents, reaching out to parents and saying, I want to talk to your child about that, talk to you about your child and growth thus far throughout this year. So that'll work both ways. But the face-to-face will certainly be canceled. There will be an opportunity for parents to reach out to teachers to schedule a phone conference if they so choose.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add also, at the end of each trimester on the elementary level and each quarter, at the secondary level, special education teachers send progress reports on progress toward reaching IEP goals as well. And so that is, that you should expect those at the end of this week as well from the, if your child has an IEP on the elementary level. And they will either be emailed or mailed, just depending on what the teacher has available to them at home. Some of them are able to just send them from their, the equipment they have at home and others are printing out hard copies and mailing them. So one or the other, but you should get them.
Thank you. Jackie?
Yep. From Lynette Genovese, we have, I don't necessarily have a question for tonight, just genuine concerns. I don't have to tell anyone how difficult the past year has been. I'm so worried about our seniors losing their prom and graduation. Graduation could be held outside on the field if needed. They have been through so much already. Please consider not canceling everything, including the musical. Obviously, we have to see what happens and I know we wouldn't risk anyone's health. All of this is just too, just too much for them to have to endure. They need these happy moments.
This breaks my heart, I've got to tell you. And I suspect everybody in this room shares that same sentiment. Yes, we understand what it's like to have, to be able to celebrate after 13 years of being in the school district, what all of them have accomplished, celebrate with their friends. It may be the last time they will have an opportunity to do that for years to come. It is a heartbreak for us. We are going to do everything we possibly can to retain the integrity of whatever these experiences are. However, you have to understand that to some extent, it's not up to us. It is the governor who has stepped into the middle of this fray. He has closed schools. There are executive orders that are going to preclude places. For example, whether it's outside or inside or anyplace else, we can't have a gathering of more than 50 people. Actually, now we hear from the federal government, they don't want a group of more than 10. So unless those guidelines are somewhat relaxed, a lot of these activities that we are talking about are not under our control. These are things that are going to have to hopefully expire as this virus disappears from the landscape and hopefully sooner rather than later. But on our end, we're not going to do anything. We're going to do everything we possibly can to retain the integrity of these experiences for our kids in the schools. And I'm looking at the board.
Well, as you said earlier--
Every one of the--
We'll have to be creative possibly, but we will--
I understand.
We're committed to--
Right, right. I know where your hearts are at as well, right?
We do feel for them, yes.
We really do.
The fifth graders, the eighth graders, the kindergartners, all these big experiences--
Yep, everybody who moves up.
The seniors, it's a big, it's a big deal. We definitely don't take it lightly. And going back to your original resilience and creativity, we'll have to employ those thoughts and see how we can get through the year.
Look, I know that, for example, Mr. Murphy is doing his best to figure out a way to allow the musical to go forward. It's such a part of what we do here at South Side High School. He pushed the date to the end of April. Hopefully, there will be enough time to prepare kids to do their part, as it were, and for all of the orchestra to be prepared. What we would have to do is to look at whether or not there would be enough practice. There is some question as to whether or not we would be permitted to have it take place and to, just as we're doing a board meeting tonight, stream it live to people's homes rather than in fact have them come into the auditorium. A lot of that will have to do with how many people are on stage. We'll have to take a look at all of that. All I can tell you is that we're going to do our best to see what we can do to preserve these wonderful experiences that these kids should have before they leave South Side.
Thank you.
From Mr. Greenfield, I would like to know, do we have a liability to Baumann Bus or any bus transportation during the two weeks ordered shutdown by Governor Cuomo?
I'll let Mr. Bartels answer that, even though I know the answer, but go right ahead, Robert.
No, we do not have a liability. Our contract with Baumann Bus and our other bus contractors is based on days of service. So if we do not have service on a given day, we don't pay the contractor for that day. There are some districts, I believe, that have monthly contracts. They may be in a somewhat more precarious position, but we are in good shape. We're based on days of service, so we have no liability for when we are not in service.
I hate to ask this question, but I know some other districts ran into a problem because bus drivers were actually suffering from this virus and that was shutting down schools because of the drivers. Are we in constant contact with Baumann and being kept up with our drivers and their reporting? Are we confident in their reporting--
Yes.
--kind of structure as well?
Yes, they have continued to advise us that they're okay with that and we should be fine continuing service.
Okay.
Okay. From Mrs. Puccio, will Regents this year have to be rescheduled or canceled because students are missing teaching in the classroom?
Again, my response to that is the same as it was to the other question about Regents. We're going to have to wait for guidance. I do know how statistically you can go back and even if you administer the exam, you can make adjustments to the scores. It would not be the very first time. I lived through the experience years ago where we canceled the physics results even after the test was given. They were thrown out because of the, they were declared invalid because of certain questions that were asked on the exam. So it wouldn't be the first time that, what the state, in addition to giving us guidance if they were to cancel them, is how do we replace them with whatever we are collecting in terms of information about kids already in the classroom? So it is a complicated issue. The state is very well aware of that. We've had numerous conversations about it and I'm very hopeful that we will get guidance on that in the next few weeks. I think, as I said earlier, and I'll reiterate, we are going to have to wait until probably April 1st when the governor's two-week closure of schools either ends or is continued. And I think at that point, then we're looking at a serious interruption of instruction and they're going to have to really take a look at how much of the year, you're looking at one-ninth of the year, one-tenth of the year disappearing in front of our eyes. What does that do to the content that you would ordinarily be able to? So we're doing our best to make sure that kids are exposed to that content, but we can't guarantee, because we're not measuring a lot of what goes on, is that all of the kids in the classrooms are learning it at the level that we wanted them to, to be prepared for the exam. So we'll do our best.
Stay tuned. Anything else, Jackie?
Yes, one more. From Cal Mustafa, the community is interested in the contingency planned by Rocco Center beyond what is being described by the CDC and government officials post on March 31st. Being closely connected with the COVID-19 government response plan, there is strong language that the remainder of the school year will be suspended for all 50 states and other territories. Is there an opportunity for a summer school session? Are there opportunities for an early start, school start program? What is the executive branch doing to recoup or provide a school tax credit as parents are forced to remain without pay while attending to their children?
There are a lot of dimensions to that question. In New York State, there are, I don't know, two time periods, two timeframes. One of them is September to June. And that essentially, as you know, is the school year. All of our contracts with teachers begin on September 1 and on June 30. There is no provision in those contracts to be extended. So I don't know what law could be passed that would override any of the contractual laws that are in place that protect the integrity of these contracts. So that on its face is a problem. Are we capable of providing an extended school year and going into next school year? The answer, of course, is yes, we can. We provide summer, a summer program for some of our kids. Could we provide it in those subjects for which a Regents is offered, but not to anybody else in any of the other subjects? The answer to that is yes. I don't know what that would look like at this point. I will tell you that not every subject has a second Regents offered in August. The majority of them do, but not every one. And so as many people in this community know, there is a June administration and an August administration. The issue really has to do with those who are graduating at this point. I don't think anything would interfere with their graduation and I think that the state is fully cognizant of that. I know what the CDC is saying and they're talking about closing schools through the end of the year and tax credits and all of that. Our governor in this respect has been very good about that and he's taking it incrementally. And I don't think what he wants to do is start making a statement about just closing them through the end of the school year until he knows for sure that he has to. I would applaud that. That's the way in which I believe we need to do it. We're prepared to plan and we have been planning incrementally. Our first plan for our remote instruction, our remote learning, rather, was for two weeks. We're prepared to put together another two weeks. So we will do it incrementally as we believe that the state will probably work incrementally to decide what to do with our schools. I would hope that they don't shut everything down for the balance of the school year and allow us to. Now, that being said, if we do get closed down, the state is going to have to figure out how to deal with, I don't believe there's enough money in the state to pay people for another contract that would extend through the summer to make up that time. I don't know how to do that. I've been around a long time. I don't think the state is prepared to do that. There are certainly provisions for early starts for next year. I don't know what that accomplishes, to be very honest with you. I think if we are closed through the end of the year, we have to figure out what that starting point would look like next year and how, over the next few years, with kids who are already in the system, how we would incrementally there, and I say incrementally again, add to what it is we do each year in order to bring them up to speed so they all graduate with the same degree of knowledge and information as their classmates who graduated the year before. So we, we're not there yet. I think it's a very, very interesting, that people are beginning to think long-term. We are too. Not that we have not ignored any of this. A lot of this stuff is being brought up before other governmental agencies. I just don't think they're there yet. This, as you know, is a health crisis right now because we don't understand entirely what the curve is going to look like or what the actions are that we're taking right now to interrupt the development of this cycle of the spread of the virus is going to have. We have to live with it incrementally and we're doing that right now. So we're prepared to plan and do whatever we have to do to continue instruction through the end of the year. But summer is a whole new ball of X. I don't think, I don't think, on the basis of all the experience I've had over these years, that anybody is prepared to extend the school year into the summer. We have no mechanism for doing that, none, zero.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you to everybody's submitted questions. We're going to move forward into our budget discussion. Mr. Bartels?
Thank you. I'm going to continue our budget discussion first.
By the way, anybody who's watching this, they know, I don't know if it pops up on their screen immediately. Does it replace the picture of you on the screen?
No, it's the whole room.
What?
It's the whole room.
It's the whole room, right. So what they're looking at, right. However, this is already on--
I believe they're going to try to focus on the screen.
Come on, not now.
Okay.
Right. It's just the whole room. And tomorrow we'll have Robert's voice over the presentation.
All right.
They're saying that they might not be able to see that far away.
Yeah, I think you better leave the lights on.
So leave it on and then we're going to have the budget presentation put online tomorrow with Robert's voice kind of overriding it as we go through the slides.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, just to refocus where we are, we're kind of right in the middle of the budget process. Today, we plan on talking about staffing, benefits, debt service, and revenue. We have another meeting scheduled, a work session on April 2nd, to do some final cleanup of different parts of the budget. On April 21st, we have our preliminary budget hearing. Again, that is the last time we can actually make a change to the budget. On May 6th, we were going to have a budget hearing. That's a required hearing that we cannot make any changes at that time. And culminating in the budget vote and election, and that's on May 19th.
Are we getting any sort of guidance about the budget vote and the election and the dates of this as of right now?
At this point, we have not received any change in guidance.
Okay.
Any discussion that we've had, either with the state, said, please continue with whatever the processes you have in place and don't walk away from any of the deadlines. Understand, there are a number of deadlines that are connected to the budget vote in May. To the extent that we can, unless we hear otherwise from the state, we're assuming that we're moving forward and we're going to meet each one of those deadlines. So there are reporting deadlines that Robert has. We have the preliminary budget hearing, we have the budget hearing. There are a number of things that we have to do and we don't want to do anything that would contribute to a elimination of our right to conduct an election in May. So, all right, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. And I hear that we're also, parents can see the budget presentation right now, we're being told.
Oh, good, okay.
This is the greatest thing about the live show. Getting tens of texts--
That's great.
--of my watch going. My watch going, that everybody can see it. That's great. Thank you very much.
All right, so I'm going to start with revenue projections. Again, we talked about this at a prior meeting. Our tax levy cap this year is 2.03%. We're going to be coming in with an actual tax levy slightly under that, at 2.01%. So we're just going to need a simple majority, again, to pass the tax, the tax levy. That will allow us to increase the budget by just under $2 million. Our non-resident tuitions, we have a large increase in that due to tuition rates and increases in the number of students, out-of-district students that are returning our core and RISE programs. $400,000 increase there. Our state aid is projected to go up about $317,000. And again, we try to conservatively project those increases. Our actual estimate from the governor's proposal is actually a higher number, but as we've seen in the last couple of years, our actual revenues come in a little bit less than what is projected for us. This is a conservative projection. And the last piece of our revenue that has, you know, has a fairly large increase is our pilot payments. Those are payments in lieu of taxes that we receive from various properties in the district, and I'm going to explain a little bit more about those. But that totals about $2.7 million of increases on the revenue side of the budget, which is going to balance our projected increase of about $2.6 million on the expense side of the budget. Pilot payments that we have, I know this question has come up, where do we get our pilot payments from? So these are properties that apply to the Nassau County or the Hempstead Industrial Development Agency to get tax relief. They pay a smaller portion of taxes, which gradually increases each year up to the amount which they would have when they're fully on the tax rolls. And then the, the projection is that they would then go on to the tax rolls. However, from time to time, they will reapply to those development agencies to continue those pilot payments so they have a more consistent tax. The properties that we have paying us in pilot payments, mostly apartment buildings. We have Mill River, two Mill River buildings, one at $116,000 a year, the other $111,000 a year. We have the Omni Building, $158,000. Building by Halandia, $141,000. And then the newer ones, the Avalon Bay properties, which is several apartments, are up to $637,000 a year. The only one that's really increasing at this point is Avalon Bay. The other four properties have been fairly consistent each year, just a few thousand dollars difference from one year to the next. Avalon Bay is the one that has been dramatically increasing, going up by about $100,000 a year. And the last one is Alipa. That's the power authority. That's at $194,000.
Robert, the Avalon Bay, like when they did the new phase, do they have to apply for a pilot?
Yes, each, each, each phase, they have to apply for a new pilot.
But we didn't even, we didn't, I remember wanting the opportunity to speak to the planning board to maybe question why they would give them the pilot. We didn't have, we weren't invited to that, that presentation?
We were. We had done that the last couple of times that they applied. We had actually gone and made statements there, and it fell on deaf ears.
The second time, the second phase, did you speak?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I didn't realize we were, we had gone.
Part of our budget is, we call it undistributed expenses. That's actually a term.
Excuse me, Mr. Bartels, can I ask a question? Trustee Dion is asking if there are any pilot payments rolling off anytime soon.
No, not that we're aware of. We expect all those ones that are, that are there to continue. So a large part of our budget is our benefits costs. It's about a little over $27 million and makes up 22.3% of the budget. Those benefits are in terms of employee retirement system contributions, teacher retirement system contributions that we make as employers to the retirement system. For the employees' retirement system, we have continued to use a reserve in the general fund for retirement system. As of right now, the only retirement system we can use it for is the employees' retirement system. There is no, no law that allows us to budget for the teachers' retirement system in a reserve. So our budget line for the employees' retirement system has no change for next year. The teachers' retirement system is based on an employer contribution rate, which has decreased. So we're actually going to see a $200,000 reduction in that budget line for next year. We have increases in social security, the FICA and Medicare costs, about $100,000, and that goes up with our salary, with our salaries and our total payroll goes up, those costs go up. Our workers' compensation costs, we're not expecting any increase for next year. Our health insurance, where we've seen upwards of $1 million in one year in increases in costs, $300,000 for an increase there is actually a small increase. That's mostly because we had no increase in rates this January, January 2020. So we had expected an increase. We had budgeted for an increase. It did not, we did not see an increase, so that will help us with our budget this year in not spending that entire budget line. And going into next year, it allows us to keep that increase down. We still need to project an increase for January 2021, but it should be much less than what we typically see as increases.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Trustee Dion is asking, what is the TRS rate this year?
TRS rate this year is 8.86%. That number in the past has changed dramatically. It was as low, it's literally been under 1%, and it has been as high as, in the last 20 years or so, it's been up to about 20%.
Yep.
So there's.
What was the last year, Rob?
Large variations. Last year was just, just under 10.
It was around 10, wasn't it?
Nine and a half, 10%.
Yeah, I remember that.
And will current fiscal issues affect TRS next year?
The way the teachers' retirement system contribution rates are set are based on a five-year rolling average of their rate of returns from their investments. So yes, they're, they certainly could be affected. Our averages right now are fairly stable the last several years. If there is one large reduction in their asset values, for, for example, come this June 30th, if the market does not recover, they will probably see a reduction. That would be a large negative return. That could impact us for several years in terms of larger contribution rates.
Yeah, just so, just so it's clearly understood, there is that five-year average. So as we begin to roll in the worst years, those things, as happened in 2008, people wondered why, when we were going into a very different kind of market, why things had not turned around as quickly with regard to TRS. And the reason, very simply, was that we work on this five-year average, and those years where we resided in that average for literally those five years. And so it dragged down and made, made our contribution rates all the way up to around 2013 and 14 really problematic for many of our school districts. I'm hoping that doesn't happen again, that it's a one-year, one-year blip.
And lastly, we have some other insurance, life insurance, unemployment insurance, some other contractual bargaining unit insurances, contribution payments. We don't expect any changes in the budget lines for those for next year. Other undistributed expenses that we have are debt service. We have short-term debt service, tax anticipation notes. That's short-term loans that we get to cover ourselves at the beginning part of the year while we're awaiting our tax revenues. So we don't get most of our taxes, tax revenues until October, November. So we need to borrow money to get us through to that point as our, for our payrolls in September and October. We have lease purchases, which are different equipment that we buy on, over, over three to five years. And we have a transfer to debt service, which is our, for all of our debt service payments for bonds we've issued in the past, and we have debt service payments. And I'm going to talk a little bit about, more about that in a minute. We have a transfer to capital line, which we expect to be the same as it was in the prior year. We have a transfer to the school lunch fund to cover any expenses beyond which is covered by our school lunch fund for the last two years. Our school lunch fund has covered all of our expenses, so we actually were able to reduce that line in the current year budget. We're going to keep that line again for, the same for next year. And last is a transfer to special aid fund. We have different summer special aid programs, 12-month students that we're required to cover costs for over the summer. We have grant funds to pay for the majority of those costs, about 80% of those costs, but we have to cover about 20%. So that's what the transfer to special aid funds are for. Our debt service schedule, and by the way, all those, all those different transfers, we're expecting to be basically the same for next year, no large increases or decreases in any of those categories. Our debt service schedule, another question that had come up from a community member to see where we stand. So what I've done is listed our current year debt service along with the next five years. So I kind of categorized them. We consolidated three different bond issues, bond issues from 2003, 2005, and 2006 into one bond issue a number of years ago, and that will be dropping off beginning in '21, '22. So not for next year, but the following year, we'll see a decline in that bond issue, and then that will drop off the year after that in '22, '23. So for next year, we're not expecting any large difference in our debt service, but the year after, again, we'd drop by about $786,000 and then $548,000. So we have about $1.3 million over the next three years should be coming off of the debt service schedule due to bond payments declining. The other bond issues that we have, we had EPC as an energy performance contract that we had issued several years ago that will be, continue to paid for. We pay for that through state aid revenues that we receive and the energy savings that we had generated from, from, from doing that work. And that has definitely paid off consistently. We have saved on our energy costs. From our last bond issue, we had, last bond authorization, we had two bond issues, one we did in 2014, one we did in 2016. So we still have a number of years left on those. And again, it's fairly stable from year to year what those expenses are. So it's really just that one bond refunding of the three different bonds that is going to be falling off over the next three years that will provide us with some relief. And as we go forward, we'll have to talk about how we're going to utilize those funds if we're talking about another bond issue, additional work to be done, and how that kind of plays in. But for next year, it's going to be relatively flat. Then we get to staffing. Everybody obviously is concerned about our staffing. Each year, we've had a number of discussions about what we needed to do to, to meet our budget, to get down to a number that, that we could stay within the tax cap. For next year, we really think we're in good shape this year, to finish out this year and to go into next year. So we're expecting all of our staffing to continue for next year with no cuts, no reductions in programs, no cuts in programs for next year. When we look at our elementary sections, every year, we look at how many students we have coming into the district in kindergarten, how many students in fifth grade are leaving. At this point, we're still, we have 78 sections at elementary this year. We're projecting 78 sections again for next year. So we're not projecting any net change there. There are a couple of grade levels that are very close to splits or to be reduced from, you know, from, say, three classes to two classes. So we'll be looking at those closely, but we are not expecting to any change there. We do have contingencies again. We've tried to keep contingencies in the budget. $200,000, which would cover two new positions. So for example, if, if we did have an increase in the number of sections, we would have money in there to cover those contingent increases. We have proposed in the budget for next year, a new elementary math implementation teacher. Currently, we have two of those. We're looking to add a third. Mr. Pelletieri could talk a little bit about what that person would do?
Certainly, Robert, thank you. We have two math implementation teachers currently in the district. They are our math go-tos, our experts in professional development and communicating what we need to do around the math curriculum. They do our timelines, they do our state test scoring, they, they work with staff directly in the classroom, they spearhead our AIS. They are two incredible individuals, Abby Kellner and Kristi Bonino. And what we are proposing now with the support of the principals, actually, it was the principals that came to me with this idea, that we are going to ask to add a third math implementation teacher. So that would increase our coverage in our buildings by 50%. I think it's really powerful that we do that. The principals, again, are the ones that have spoken up about this, they're even willing to offset the hiring of this individual with, I believe, two TAs or something along those lines, Robert, to, to help bring that cost down, the additional cost of it. Again, their ability to work directly with our teachers, to be colleagues that come into their classroom and help them with professional development and help support the math program, to work directly and intimately with our, with our students, really know them well, I think it's really vital that we move in this direction if the opportunity presents itself. And again, I know the principals could speak very eloquently on that topic. Unfortunately, they're not here tonight, but I, so I am attempting to do so. But I really think it's something that we've talked about in the past, and I think it's high time that we move in this direction.
Dr. Pelletieri, can you just discuss the scheduling for them? So are they currently assigned to specific buildings?
Yes.
Or are they each in?
So one of them actually is in three different buildings. So she only gets to go two days to Culver, two days to Riverside, and two days to Watson School. And now she'd be able to spend three days in all those buildings, so she'd increase, if my math is correct, by 50%, right? She'd be there a whole nother day. And same with, Abby is in, she right now is in, I'll get it, Hewitt and Wilson, thank you, and for three days, and she'd be able to go there for a day and a half more, so she'd be there four and a half days. So we'd work out in particular who it is and where they'd be and everything, but I think that that coverage alone and working with teachers and continuity that would take place, rather than being somewhere for two days in a six-day cycle, being there three days is a good start. We may come back at some point in the future and say, we'd like to have more. A lot of districts do have people in all of their elementary buildings in terms of reading. We do have that in terms of reading, and they have it in math as well. We don't have it in math yet. This is a great first step to get closer to that.
And are there opportunities for them to meet with the sixth-grade math teachers at any point?
Part of, yeah, sure. Part of what they do is to make sure that we have that continuity of instruction, so they do meet with the, the sixth grade. Those meetings take place each year. And those math timelines that they create, the curriculum that they do, again, and running the state tests for us and the scoring and getting their, their keen eye around what it is that, that we're looking for in terms of math principles and the progressions, really important stuff. And to be able to add to that would be, I think, a boon to our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pelletieri.
Mr. Bartels?
Of course.
With all the talk of how cheap money is to borrow now, does it With all the talk of how cheap money is to borrow now, does it warrant us looking to refinance some of our debt?
Certainly look into it. It did a number of years ago when we converted three bonds. These, the other ones we have are fairly recent, but certainly could take a look. There are certain requirements with some of the debt that we have, so sometimes we're not allowed to refinance them until we get to a certain point into the loan, so, but we can certainly look at that.
Thank you.
Dr. Leahy is looking for another clerical position to address some additional pupil personnel services support. I know their work has increased. Maybe Dr. Leahy can talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So yes, the work has increased based on the numbers of students receiving services in the district, but also we've had an aide that's done a lot of, you know, just office work, filing and shredding and whatnot. And so this additional clerical support would not be in addition to that aide. The aide would be no longer work in the office, and so that's going to offset the cost of the additional clerical person. But I mean, it certainly will help us to, you know, run more efficiently our CSC meetings and making sure that we have all the documentation paperwork in place that is, you know, pretty onerous when it comes to running those programs.
Just as a follow-up to last year, when we had added the elementary school counselor, and I know Denise has been such an asset to the district this year, is there any talk about expanding PPS staff beyond clerical at this point?
There's definitely talk about that. I think we're always discussing the need to make sure that we have a really substantive social emotional support staff. We have a fantastic set of social workers and psychologists and school counselors. And you're right, the addition of Denise this year was just amazing. I mean, she's really just taken off with this program to bring school counseling services to children as young as kindergarten. So I'm delighted. And certainly, there's some talk about helping her at the elementary level so she's not spread so thin. And there is, you know, there have been some parents that approached me about the level of support in terms of social workers at the secondary level, just concerns that there's people always there to conduct counseling, be there for students that may not be necessarily at the most serious risk, but really just universally be able to implement, be there for kids so they're not having to grapple with, you know, some certain issues on their own. So certainly, that's always on the table to kind of take a look at. I've actually just pulled, recently before the recent events transpired, all of the mandated counseling, how it's assigned, is it evenly dispersed? And we're really taking a look at our assignments of that staff very carefully.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leahy. We also have a small increase in our speech services, 0.3 FTE, that's what we call a full-time equivalent. That's just to address ongoing needs and making sure we have enough-
Yeah, it not only addresses the IEP-driven speech services, but also our speech teachers do a fabulous job providing speech improvement services, which prevent, you know, more intensive services later on and kind of make corrections to minor delays. When children first enter school, they get their eyes and ears on kindergarten students, and so it's really great to be able to continue to provide that service and, you know, not have to cut that back too much. So we were cut a little bit close to the bone. This will allow us to, you know, really provide that services across all five elementaries.
Thank you. And the last item is, we have an allocation, so we've placed money in the budget for a class in American Sign Language. That's the equivalent of a 0.2 FTE, so that would be for one class at the high school of American Sign Language. I think we're still actually, you know, reviewing that to see if we have enough interest in holding that class, but we wanted to make sure we had funding in the budget should we need to run that class for next year.
How are we assessing the need for that class or desire for it? Through students?
It's a little bit of a chicken and the egg issue. You know, it's not an easy position to fill. I was actually, as recently as about six hours ago, in a conversation with a potential candidate. So we're really looking to see if we could find enough people so that we have a pool to interview, to be able to place someone that has the correct certification to teach ASL. And then once we're able to do that, then we'd be able to assess the interest through the high school, the school counselors, and Mr. Murphy will put something out here at the high school.
Okay. Thank you.
And my last slide, I just wanted to go over kind of the major budget changes. So that's kind of it for staffing. We're just, you know, those were the projected increases that we have. All of the staffing remains the same. Enrolling the staff forward, that increase in salaries would be about $1,478,000. The new and contingent staff piece would be another $350,000. Our health insurance increase, $300,000. Special ed placements, that's a combination. We have some movement moving around in private schools, BOCs and private placements, that's out to about $225,000 in additional costs. The social security costs that I mentioned at $100,000. We have our Northwell Health Program, so the money, $65,000 in that budget, $55,000 is for the program, plus $10,000 if we're able to coordinate it as a BOC service where we would then get aid on that program. That cost, I don't think is still set in stone yet. It depends on how the program runs, how many districts participate next year, but it won't be any higher than this amount. We have some additional students that need one-to-one nurse services, so that's another chunk of money, $55,000. Computer virus software, so we have some other antivirus software that we are looking to put into the budget for next year. We're still evaluating some different types of software to making sure that if we're going to get it, we're going to get the kind of the bang for the buck as we utilize that to make sure that some issues that we had this year don't happen again. And last is the employer contributions from TRS, reduction of $200,000 there. So when we look at those total costs, so just that one group of items, increase the budget $2.4 million. The overall budget increase at this point is about $2.6 million, so there've been some other slight changes throughout the budget, but all the other changes were much smaller changes. So these were all the larger changes in the budget. So you have kind of the revenues and the expenditures kind of balancing each other out, and that's where we stand on the budget.
That's great. And just to be clear, so the public doesn't worry that there's another shoe about to drop, that's it?
That's it. There's no other shoe to drop. We, as I said before, we're in good shape this year. We are not looking to cut anything, to reduce anything. We're very comfortable with what we have and very happy that we can move forward with a good, solid budget and maybe shore it up a little bit in a couple of places.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
No.
Jackie, did we have any questions coming on the budget?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Opportunity for superintendent?
I think I've said an awful lot already. I just, again, wanted to thank the board, thank the community for the cooperation that we've seen so far from our families in working with our children at home. And again, applaud the work done by our teachers and our staff. And I can't tell you from the bottom of my heart, thanking the people who surround me every single day in that central office, despite whatever they may think. They come in, and every day, we find out new dimensions and try to work it. So Chris Noreen, Robert, Jackie, and Sue have been just incredible in the way in which they have contributed to putting together the wide variety of things that we've done for kids. But most of all, I really think what we need to do is to reach out and thank the families in advance for all the time and effort they're going to spend with their children and helping them. Again, we always talk about this idea of us raising children with families. This takes it to a whole new dimension. So that's it for me. That's all I really needed to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. O'Shea?
I would just like to thank everybody that has made this process come to light. It is brand-new to us, so there will be some bumps in the road, but we will do the best we can to solve, smooth those bumps out and move forward. I want to urge the public, if your children are feeling anxious, if you're feeling anxious about that, reach out and get some help. Talking about it is, you know, will help you get through things, and there are people in the community, people in the school district, that are here to help you deal with the, you know, this is a stressful issue, so it's, you know, it's sometimes hard to process. And I just want to urge everybody, you can think what you want of the coronavirus, but it's real. It has serious ramifications on the health of, mostly our elderly population, so please heed all the warnings and precautions. It's very important for all of us that everybody can, does their bit to get us through this problem. It is a serious problem that may be hard to look and see, but it definitely needs all our attention and all, you know, we need to do the right thing to get past it. Thank you.
Mrs. Barry?
Yes, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Johnson and everyone at this table, Dr. Pelletieri, Dr. Leahy, Mr. Bartels, Mrs. Wong, and my colleagues on the board. It's been a very tumultuous week and will be weeks ahead for sure. It's an honor and privilege to serve this community, and we say that often, but it bears repeating tonight. And we will continue to work together to be, you know, very open about our communication when we learn things. I just want to thank the district administration. Again, you guys have been phenomenal about consistently communicating with the community and keeping us all up to date, so I'm really grateful for that, and I'm sure that will continue. I have three students in the middle school and at Watson, two of them, and they came home on Friday and not an ounce of fear or anxiety. They were really set, and they knew exactly what they had to do come Wednesday. And I just wanted to thank, from the bottom of my heart, every single teacher, every administrator in this district, and every staff member, because you have done a phenomenal job of preparing our kids, and I am more than confident in knowing that you will continue to do so in the weeks ahead. Thank you.
I echo that gratitude. We are really so thankful to live in this community. We've seen the support. This community always does rally together and continues to do so, and we so appreciate that. But just what I've been getting from everybody is that same gratitude, so we share that on behalf of the community, to the administration, to the teachers, to the staff. So thank you very much. We all know as parents right now, we're navigating all of this day by day, and that's how we have to do this. For our kids, we have to think about them and keep them as the focus right now, because this is a strange time for them. We know it's a strange time for us as well. None of us have ever lived through anything like this before. So, you know, we've kind of changed what learning looks like for them, we've changed what their socialization looks like. We are limited as to what we're able to do right now as families, as community members, and these are children. So we understand that it's a tough time for everybody, but we do still keep the focus on the kids here. And the school district is still, like we said, for all intents and purposes, operational for the children. Please reach out to us for any needs whatsoever. There's so many different channels and ways you can get in touch with us, but we're here. We're here for you as families, and we're here for you for the children. So we understand that we have to be flexible in a time of uncertainty, and that can be very scary. But please, again, I stress and I echo John's sentiments, please follow the CDC guidelines. Please don't put your kids in large groups together. Please make sure that they're paying attention. We're all listening and going, as you've seen, everything has changed minute by minute here. One day, we're closing for two days, then we're closing for two weeks, then it's two and a half weeks. We have to roll with it, so we just want everybody to pay attention. Please report anything to the district that needs reporting. But most of all, please stay safe, stay calm, and stay healthy. We're here for you, and be well. So Jackie, is there any opportunity for visitors? Any questions?
No.
Okay. No? Okay, so we're going to move forward. Can I have a motion to approve financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve receipt of financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the public work session March 4th and the special meeting March 6th?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve items for action A through H plus the addendum and addendum two?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to retire to executive session to discuss specific personnel contractual and litigation matters?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.